We will call to order the regular Board of Education meeting of June 11th, 2013. I invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After the public commentary, we'll have a recognition of our retiring district personnel. But at this time, if there is anybody who wishes to address the board, they may do so for up to three minutes. Any takers? Okay, good for Debbie Gray.
All right, I would like to invite the retirees up to, at least towards the podiums, if you want to come on up and say a few words and then we'll get you guys out of here. Come on up. I know we had an opportunity last week to say a few words about each of the candidates or each of the candidates. Yeah, each of the retirees and the efforts and energies that this group collectively has put before our community. And the comment I made the other night was about planting trees that we will never see the shade from. And I think the other comment that I would make would be about standing on the shoulders of others. The group that is here tonight represents those who have really laid the groundwork for our school district. And while I feel confident that we're moving in the right direction, we're moving because of the efforts of the people that have come before us. And to go along that line, there's a poem, and I can't take credit for finding it. Cordellis found it, and it's something that, a poem that we've given to each of the retirees. I'm going to read it, and it kind of talks a little bit about their efforts. It's called "The Builder," and it's an author unknown. "I once saw a group of men tearing a building down, a group of men in my hometown. With a heave and a ho and a mighty yell, they swung the beam and the side wall fell. I asked the builder, 'Are these men skilled, the kind I would hire if I wanted to build?' He laughed and said, 'Why, no indeed, common labor is all I need, for I can tear down in a day or two what it took the builder ten years to do.' So I thought to myself as I walked away, 'Which of these roles am I going to play? Am I going to tear down as I make my merrily way, or am I going to build with care, with the hope that the people will be glad I was there?' Again, I didn't mean the group of people that were all glad we're here, and are truly builders within our community. And I thank you for your years of dedicated service for our students, for others, and to our community. Thank you."
Just a few minutes here. This is the largest group of retirees we've had since 2010, and collectively, 401 years of service. Ed Reddy's, three years. Claudia Whitson, six years. Doug Bacon, eight years. Candy Wechman, eight years. Lori LeBomacki, 12 years. Diane Tu, 23 years. Carol London, 23 years. Karen Sepharic, 30 years. Batina Hoops, 30 years. Sharon Nicola, 30 years. Debbie Golacki, 34 years. Linda Monte, 35 years as a bus driver. God bless her. Denise Mainly, 37 years. Cindy Fisher, 37 years. Jace Olahan, 38 years. And Mary Converse, 47 years. And we've been scrounging the district records, and if you do believe that you are the longest-serving member of the board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, super Debbie Gray.
Just a couple of other quick announcements. One, you'll notice in the around us now, we're surrounded by student artwork. This is now the Celine Area Schools Art Gallery. We had an event last week, kind of opened this, and we'll be rotating student artwork throughout this venue and having different events here to celebrate the artwork of our students in the coming months and years. So it'd be great after you. I'd like to thank Steve Loach and our art department for kind of getting this off the ground as a really valuable and an opportunity to share student artwork. So I encourage you to look around the room. We had a meeting here earlier today, and I saw a proud parent identifying one of their child's pieces of artwork, and taking some pictures. So again, I encourage you to do that. This is a busy time of year. As you know, we're kind of wrapping up 2012, 2013, and really gearing up for 2013, 14. And on that note, not only to the retirees, but to the staff and the students and community, this really has been an exceptional year for Celine Area Schools. You can obviously see rankings and awards, but again, I would like to really, truly thank the board, the community, the staff, and the students for an exceptional year. These are challenging times, and it's great to see Celine Area Schools coming together and moving in such a positive direction. So that's all I have for tonight.
But are there any board members that have any comments?
I'd like to thank whoever, everyone that put together graduation last week. It was a great, another great event, and nice to see another group of highly educated Celine students move off into the real world.
Almost.
Almost, okay. Close to the real world.
I have a question. I heard somebody say that the custodial staff volunteered their time.
Well, they put in a lot of time. Depending on the scenario, when do they run out of overtime to do it? But I would say, how do they do it? They're there all weekend long. If you know we had some rain issues late in the week, and so forced a shift in our setup schedule, just really tightened everything up, and that's one of those situations where there's no time to spare. That event's going off, and so there's no, hey, we need to do the back an hour kind of a scenario. So I applaud their efforts. If you noticed, that night, they come, they're dressed professional, they're there late well beyond into the evening after we're all gone. That place is cleared out by the end of the summer, so they'll do a great job.
Okay, anybody else? I did attend the ISD biannual election on June 3rd. There were two candidates. There's three trustees. Two were up for election, and they were unopposed, and so they will serve a new century. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. So move. Support. All those in favor who signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oh, most of the parents. Scheduled reports. We are going to recognize Mr. Chad Antonelli for completing his year of service as the student representative for the board. Would you like to come up here?
Actually, well, yeah, why don't you guys move over by the American flag over here? I'm going to have to get ready. It's an opportunity for us to honor Chad. Chad's been an outstanding school board, student representative for the school board, and in addition, an outstanding student. He was honored as one of the top five academic center classes, participating in a variety of extra curriculum. And I'll give a plaque that will give to Mr. Chad.
There you go. He's also going to be attending the University of Michigan.
In addition, we have a scholarship for Chad, a $500 scholarship to support junior ed or faculty overseas. Okay, congratulations, Andrew Scott.
And next, we have Ms. Kelly Hall to speak on the fitness trail. Come on up.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm sorry I was late, and also that I don't believe I have enough copies. We're having some printer trouble, so instead of the copies for everyone and writing a time that I was hoping for, I have 10 copies, so. Well, I am honored to be able to speak tonight for the board, and I thank them for allowing me to do so. I'm going to talk about a project that I've been working on for the past few months, and also working with some other students on, and some other community members on. And Mr. Bacon has been a huge help with this. So the Mike Price Memorial Trail. We are trying to build a running, walking trail on the grounds of Celine High School. We're also building a golf course, which is something two other Celine seniors, or I guess Celine graduates now, Jesse Lett and Brian Grophy, are working on that as part of the ultimate frisbee club. So the past few months, we've been, well, I guess I'll start where the idea came from. I did this as an independent study during the third trimester of high school. I worked with Mr. Dice, the health teacher at the high school. And I've always wanted to do sort of a bigger project for the community, but I've never really known how or had the opportunity. So it sort of came along, and I did a running for my four years, so I appreciate places to run, and this seems like a perfect opportunity. Mr. Mike Price was a PE teacher, he was a coach, he was a parent, he was a director of ed instructor, and he was also the reason I started running way back in eighth grade. During gym class every day, I'd run the warm-up, and he'd say, "You have to, you have to do track, you have to do track." And I'd say, "No, I hate running." But he finally got me to come out, and it was the best decision I ever made during my time here. And he was a really incredible man, and I think, I know just anyone that you talk to, he's touched their lives in some way. So I think it's really fitting that the community has sort of a lasting tribute to him. So far, we've been hard at work on this. There's a lot that goes into it, but it's been fun every day. We sort of started, we talked with Mr. Bacon, because there were plans to do this project before. So there were sort of some ideas about where the, where the path would go and who would be involved, and so we looked at those. We worked with Community Ed and Rotary Club, who are both very generous and really great partners, so we've been working with them. We've been getting wood chip donations from local tree services, actually called, all seven of them today. And so they're going to start dumping chips here soon, hopefully is when we get, have the go-ahead. And they're all being donated, which is awesome. We also, we have a Facebook page, so feel free to like us. We can talk to the newspapers, we have high school announcements, just trying to get the word out. And then I met with Mrs. Halber, and I have her full support to go ahead. And then we've also just been out there, sort of looking at the area. It is really, it's a beautiful area, where if you look on the back, there's a map of what we're sort of envisioning. If you imagine the high school, for everyone who doesn't have a map, sort of the woods on the athletic parking lot side by the tennis courts. It's just gorgeous back there, but every time you go back, the birds are chirping, the sun is shining, and I think it'd be a beautiful place to have a trail, just, you know, that could be used by the whole community. Like sports teams, of course, that's an entry team for me, but also just students, teachers, community members. I think it could be a really beautiful place, and to play disc golf, which is really fun. So the next steps, obviously, I would, I want full approval from the school board. If you have any thoughts or concerns, I would love to address them. Then, once we sort of have the go-ahead to start going, we can start clearing the area. We can, we have a lot of volunteer groups that have committed to helping, so we're going to organize some big volunteer days to trade wood chips and sell signs and sell benches, sell disc golf poles. So I really, I really want it to be a community collaboration, and I think having as many groups involved as possible would be awesome. I sort of have the path in two phases. There's a smaller one-mile loop and then a larger loop later, hopefully, but right now, the big focus is the smaller loop and also the disc golf course. And then, you know, we really do want to make it something beautiful, so flowers. The SHS welding class, I've been working, the teacher, he, we'd like to try making mile markers and having them install a long course. And then, hopefully, by the end of the summer or sometime in the near future, we can hold a public ribbon cutting dedication ceremony and open a trail to the public. So that's sort of the goal, and then I hope for years in the future, this can be a really nice addition to this Celine community. And I'm definitely willing to put in the work. I know Mr. Bacon's been really awesome, even as he is about to retire. He's just been an incredible help, and I've really been amazed by just the outpouring of community support. It's been really incredible, and I hope we're able to give back to the community as much as they've given already. If you see in the back here, I thought it was very appropriate, the senior class, because I am a senior, I just graduated, and our class motto was, "I will not follow where the path may lead, but I will go where there is no path, and I will leave a trail." And so I would like to help leave my mark and our mark on the town that gave so much to me. So are there any questions I can address?
Oh, no. Well, we appreciate your efforts. I think it's a great idea. Chad?
Have you had an opportunity to talk to Chuck Lush, one of the coaches?
Yeah, yeah, I have, because I know at one point he wanted to make a trail, and I got, yeah, he was really great. We've been exchanging emails.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Very cool.
Yeah.
The row lawnmower guy. My lawn mower. Okay, you use yours. So, you know, from my standpoint, next steps, Ms. Hall and I would sit down and kind of go over the plan in a little more detail, and certainly answer any questions. If the board has any questions after tonight, it gets to me, and then we'll sit down and kind of lay out what our options are, to give a look at any policy considerations, and then, you know, without hearing anything, move forward in terms of developing this project.
Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you so much.
Debbie Gray. I'm going to deviate from the agenda briefly. I see we have Mayor Marle in the, in the back of the room, and I think he has something here for us.
It's the beginning. President Holden, thank you for, thank you for indulging me, and the rest of the school board, good evening. In my official capacity as mayor, let me, let me first begin by thanking and congratulating all of the faculty members, support staff, and administrative staff who will be retiring this year. You've obviously contributed greatly to this community's success. You know, one of the reasons why this is such a great place to live in, and a great place to raise kids in, and a great place to start a business in, is because of our outstanding school system. So congratulations to all of you who are retiring, and best of luck in all your future endeavors. I do have the distinct privilege and honor, though, of recognizing one faculty member in particular, because she has contributed 47 continuous years of service to our school district, and that's quite a remarkable feat. So I think we should give her a round of applause just for that. Well, I'm sorry I missed the first round of applause, but you deserve a second. And Mrs. Converse, in addition to being an educator for 47 years, was an educator to Mr. Gray, and our superintendent, I believe, an educator to Mr. Raff, and was my educator a little more than 10 years ago for Lit and Society and for Debate. And evidently, I don't know if I hoodwinked her, but I convinced her to be the advisor for the Young Democrats Club that I started at Celine High School.
He was so shy.
Yeah, that I started at Celine High School in 2001. And she is a remarkable educator. She's very, very gifted at what she does. I enjoyed our discussions and our lively debates, especially about Coleman Young. She still doesn't like him, I do. I think that's actually a history moment for the Celine School Board. That's the first time a white kid's ever come up and said anything positive about Coleman Young. But, but you truly are a remarkable educator, and so my office saw fit to recognize you in this way. So we prepared a certificate of recognition. It's very brief, but I'm going to read it anyways. And it begins with, "Whereas Mary Sue Converse was hired by Celine Area Schools on September 8th, 1966, and has for 47 continuous years of, and has served for 47 continuous years of service," excuse me, "Mrs. Converse has been an outstanding educator and a pillar within the community for close to 50 years. And whereas Mary Sue has taught many current Celine Area School teachers and administrators, including Superintendent Scott Grayden, and whereas Mary Sue Converse has adapted to a lot of change during her six decades in education, but she never wavered in her commitment to providing her students with the very best she had to offer every day throughout her career. Now therefore, let it be resolved that I, Brian D. Marle, mayor, on behalf of the Celine City Council and the citizens of Celine, do hereby publicly recognize and extend our sincere appreciation of Mary Sue Converse for her dedication and outstanding career with Celine Area Schools. And I hereby set my hand and seal to this document on the 11th day of June 2013. Congratulations."
Wow, I knew this was going to happen someday.
Here, we'd like to invite Bob Rosenberg to come forward and make a presentation on Celine Main Street.
Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you and speak with you about something that I have a passion for, and that is Celine Main Street. So who are we? I want to talk a little bit, I promise I'll only give you this, but I want to share with you who we are, what we're trying to accomplish, and how we're trying to accomplish it. So who are we? Well, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation. We have been in existence for a year. June of 2013 marks the year anniversary, one-year anniversary. We are part of Michigan Main Street. There is a Michigan Main Street, part of government, and there are 40-plus communities in Michigan that are Main Street communities. And we're growing. We're also part of a national Main Street organization, and that began way back in 1948 as part of the National Trust for Historic Preservation. So Main Street has its roots, its history in history, or historical preservation. It started, I said 48, 49, with Harry Truman. Sorry, never was a good history student. Main Street began as an offshoot of the National Preservation Society in 1980, when four gentlemen got together and came up with the idea of creating Main Street communities. And there are, in the United States right now, over 2,000 communities that are Main Street communities. So what do we do? What's our mission? Our mission is to enhance the vitality of downtown Celine as the social, cultural, economic, and historic heart of our community. And why is that important? I mean, you know, we have a very small district. Our district runs from Harris to Lewis and Henry to McKay, so it's really not a very large district. So why is that important in Celine when we only serve a small district? And I think the reason is because vibrant, healthy, growing downtown is beneficial to everyone. You know, my wife and I moved here about, our family moved here about eight years ago, and I came for a job in the Ann Arbor area, and we had our choice of communities that surrounded Ann Arbor. We chose Celine in part because of the downtown area, because it's quaint, and it's charming, and it's wonderful, and the people are great, and of course, the schools are great, too. So all of that had, had part of, and was part and parcel of our reason, our personal reason for, for coming and settling in Celine. And vibrant downtowning, it's growing and alive and thriving, is good for our whole community. So the Main Street approach is a four-team approach. We, a lot of people look at the events that we do, like the summer music series that's going on right now, and they think, well, we put on events to get people to come downtown. And that's true, but that's only a part of the whole picture. Our four-team approach has four teams. The one's organization, the promotion, design, and business and economic success team. So let's look at that promotion team. They do events, events that draw people downtown. We want people to come downtown, see our downtown, and then come back and shop and dine and enjoy downtown Celine. The organization team is made up of people, well, everybody in our community, our organization is a volunteer. Our whole organization, except for me, our whole organization is made up of volunteers, and so we, the organization team, part of their, their charge is to bring volunteers into our organization. Because if we have volunteers, we don't function. We also need money, so they are also responsible for funding, and we're also responsible, they are also responsible for communication. They make people know who we are and what we do, partly a lot of the reason that I'm here this evening. The design team is, has a goal of preserving historical integrity of our downtown buildings and making downtown inviting. We recently had a specialist from the state come in and talk to anybody who was open to public, anybody who wanted to come in and talk about historical preservation, how to get buildings that are, that are historical and keep their integrity, but also make them livable for today's world. And as part of that, we have two businesses, or buildings, I should say, downtown, that have applied for some free services, for design services, so we're really excited about that. The business and economic success team is, their goal is to strengthen existing downtown businesses and to help recruit new ones. We do have some empty spaces downtown, so we're looking for businesses that will help our community thrive and grow. So what are some of the current projects? Well, the organization team, we're gearing up for a resource team visit. The resource team visit is June 25th through 27th, and we're bringing in specialists from the national organization and the state organization, and they're going to have a look, see, they're going to take a look at us and see how we're doing and what we might change in order to do even better as we go forward. Usually, they, the resource team visits occur after an organization for two years, after you've been in existence for two years. So I'm taking it as a positive that they're coming after only one year old. I think it's going to be a great visit. Many of the members of the community will be involved. We have meetings that are going on, and it's going to be an exciting time. We also do, the organization also does a newsletter. The newsletter comes out every month. It's, it has stuff that's pretty exciting. If you aren't enrolled, you get our e-newsletter. You can go to our website, www.celinemainstreet.org, and right on the front page, you can click on the get the newsletter button. Corporate sponsorships, again, we do need sponsors, and the Thousand Friends Program, which I'll mention a little bit later. The promotion team does projects like Music Under the Arch, which we just finished, the summer music series, we have some really great acts, great entertainers coming in on Thursday evenings. It's going to happen from 7 to 9. It's on South Ann Arbor, we block off the street, and the Celine Fiddlers will be our entertainment on Thursday evenings. So I invite everybody to come out and see the Fiddlers. It's a great group, as I'm sure you know. This year, we're doing two new events. One is called the Mastodon Mayhem Run. That's a challenge run. It's a run through the Muck and Meyer, over, under, over, around, and through obstacles. They're going to run through the stream, they're going to, it's going to be fun, over walls. I never even knew about these before, but I found out about them, and I guess if you don't get dirty, you haven't had a good time. And I believe that the fire department is coming down to hose people off after the event. Now that sounds like fun. And the Wicked Kickin' Hoedown is a barn dance that's going to happen in October. We've got some, some, a great band coming in, we're going to do some line dancing, we're going to have an auction. It's going to be a great time, and more news will be coming out about that as we further develop it. The design project does Be Blumen. Those are all the flowers that are downtown. They're hanging baskets and planters on the ground, and they really do beautify downtown. They are sponsored, each hanging basket or planter is sponsored by individuals in the community, and you get a commemorative plaque if you'd like to do that. You can just call the office, and I'll be more than happy to help you do that. It's $75, but it does really beautify our downtown. And the alley project, there's an alleyway between Reckon Grill and Montiamo and what used to be Little Caesar's, and we're, excuse me, developing that so that people can enjoy it and use it during the summer months. So fun stuff. And the business and economic success team, we're doing a market analysis. And the Business and Economic Success Team, we're doing a market analysis study and a business survey. The Opportunity Tour is something that we're working on to try and get people interested in coming and looking at the sites that we have and the potential for doing business in Celine, especially in the downtown area. And we're talking with Spark without doing the Start Your Own Business seminar. We also like to involve tomorrow's leaders. The students in Celine High School are the leaders of our community for tomorrow. And so we have high school students on our teams, we have two students who serve on our Board of Directors, we have met with the Youth Council on two different occasions, and we have talked actually with Kelly about projects that we might do, and they recently helped us put the box up for the Bebloomin' plant. So thanks to them, and what a great organization that is, really, super young, men and women. So how can you help? Well, I said we have volunteers and need for funding, so corporate sponsorship program, companies that have sponsored us, and we have many, they reach thousands of people at our events and through ads and social media. Kelly mentioned that they have a Facebook page, a Facebook page. You could like us too, that'd be great. We have a website, we do, we tweet, which is kinda cool, so you can follow us if you want. And anyway, so the companies do get a good reach, they get a lot of play at the Summer Music Series, for example. We always mention our sponsors and we thank them because without them, we wouldn't have Summer Music Series or any of the other things that Main Street does. We also have our 1,000 Friends Campaign. We're trying to get a thousand people who want to be part of the organization, donate $25 apiece, become a friend of Celine if you want to do that. You can go to our website, or you can call the office, I'd be glad to help. And we have our four teams, so you could also join a team. We always do need volunteers, always looking for people who can give a little time or a lot of time. Volunteers? So I thank you for your time, and I'm gonna send my apologies your way because we do have our board meeting tonight, so I've got a scoop. But again, questions, I'd be very happy to answer.
Any questions or comments from board members?
I went to their volunteer training, and it was well done, and I applaud the organization that you're pulling together, and I really do see good things coming from it, so I would encourage anybody to get involved.
Thank you, it's great to have you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I will move to our action items. The Chair will entertain a motion to renew membership to the Michigan Association of School Awards for 2013-14. Zimmer, Jay, support, and Paul. Discussion.
I'll just note, this is the same organization we joined last year. It is the sole governing body for the feet of Michigan School Board.
And I think many of the training classes that most of us have been to, they're counting value out of that. As Scott mentioned, the other offices right there in Lansing, they provide a lot of information on what's happening on legislation in Lansing, and certainly we give value out of this organization.
What is the cost to the district to join us here, to renew?
Approximately $6,000.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt the MHSAA Membership Resolution for 2013-14 as outlined by Superintendent Grayden. Need a motion? Zimmer, Jay, support, and Todd.
This is the sole governing body of Michigan High School Athletics. It's an organization that we continue to, just to say it again, this will be for next year, next school year, and this combined just will abide by their rules and regulations moving forward. And this is the organization that we competed in the quarterfinals today with our softball team. We'll have to tough on next rankings.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Go ahead.
Is there any cost associated with this? As an upfront fee?
No, there are no dues associated, obviously there are costs.
There are costs.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the changes to board policies 5510, layoff and recall, 5512, teacher assignment, 5520, staff evaluation process, and 5540, discipline, demotion, and discharge of certified staff as submitted by the Policy Committee. Need a motion? Zimmer, Todd, support, and Paul. Chair Ben Zimmer.
As also changes to state legislation last year, we need to create these four policies. And for active policies, we look very carefully at the past practices of the Huckabout Agreement. We look very carefully at making sure that administration worked with the various union leadership, make sure they're aware of the changes that we're looking at. And we also question the legal counsel to make sure that language that we incorporated in changes reflected legislation where we had to, and where we had the choice of trying to make the language consistent with the Huckabout Agreement to try to do so. So it's attempting to accommodate the legislation requirements while also trying to make sure we're being consistent in how we've done things in the past. That's the gist of the changes that we have here that we need to move forward for the future.
Did MASP give us, like, sample or are these, we kind of did it on our own?
There are largely policies that describe a few columns of law and things that we were looking at, you know, really towards the middle of the calendar year, probably the middle of the school year. And so we've kind of proceeded cautiously and have reviewed the legal counsel, very close to fully compliant. MASP and NEAL are also have their kind of early laws through the other one. We've kind of looked at all of those.
And I'd like to thank trustees Zimmer and Vice President Hatt and Secretary Carter for servicing on the policy committee. That's tedious work, it's not glamorous. A lot of it's driven by, you know, legislation coming out of Lansing, which then we have to interpret, so in collaboration with the administration and our legal counsel, I believe that we have some sound policy to move forward with. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion items, elementary world language program. Assistant Superintendent Latch.
Before we do though, I do want to thank Lori Dawson, who was here as well. She really helped Spear have this art gallery here as well, did some fundraising efforts, and has really helped us get it off the ground, so she did a lot of work as well, I want to recognize her.
So we're here tonight to talk a little bit about the Foundation for Celine Area Schools Strategic Grant, the Level of Language Update. And we really have a partner in the foundation, and they've been helping us for years, really take curriculum efforts to a new level. As everybody knows, in this day and age, funding is tight, and they've really been supporting some of these newer initiatives that have been trying to get off the ground, whether it's a literacy grant, or a project, Lead the Way, or the Level of Language. They've just been a great partner, and we thank them in all their efforts. So tonight, we're here to talk a little bit about the process, and in short, they helped us raise $75,000 to start a world language elementary program. And in order to do that, we needed to form a world language committee, and so we did so. And I want to make sure we thank all of the people that put a lot of effort into this this year. That included our three elementary principals, Betty Rosen, Leacher Brad, D. Zoo, Michelle Checkowitz, Sue Fan Lin, who's the director of Pu Corner. We have Mark Messmore, Jamie Almond, Tina Hoos, they're here tonight as well, and they are world language teachers from the high school. They were instrumental in helping us with this process. We also have two students, Delphine Wu and Ben here, I don't want to say Delphine, but Ben's here as well. He did a terrific job. And they also did a nice job speaking at a winter engagement, a snow blast to help raise funds for the program, and they prepared a speech and just did a super job promoting the importance of language in the community. We have trustees that helped with us with this as well, Anne Bayless, Reed Paxton, Rob Dowell, Pam Dollman, Abba Wiersbach, community members, Mary K. Dees, Brenda Spears-Mania, Patty Tanner, Blanell Morgan, Barb Cornish, a former world language teacher, was back helping us with this, and Coral Lopez, who's an EMU world language professor. So this group did a terrific job, and we can give them a warm round of applause. As we started to work on the process, we worked off of ten major areas, and some are still in process, but in general, these were the ten charges that we were set out to work through in developing our articulated vision for the world language program. That was to develop a basic philosophy, set goals to the program, select the program structure, determine staffing on how that would play out next year and in the future. And then number five is highlighted in blue because selecting the language, that was what we were spending significant time on, and I wanted to talk further about that after this slide. We're articulating multiple entry points, next steps, you know, as students come into the program down the line, how do we help them get immersed in the culture if they haven't had language yet, and they're coming in as a second grader, for example. Implementing a schedule and budget, developing a program evaluation, figuring out if it's working, we're trying to build proficiency in a language, and developing public relations plan, getting the word out to the community on what we're doing, and disseminating program information. So we've completed a number of these steps, and we still have a few steps that need to be happening in the future. So when we go back to selecting the language, what we spent significant time on was we had four primary languages focused here: French, German, Spanish, and Mandarin. And we had groups of our committee create these outstanding presentations, and they put a lot of time into this. They researched, they determined, why should we support either French, Spanish, German, or Mandarin at the elementary level? And I was just getting a little snapshot of some of the presentation slides. So in French, some of the reasons why we should be considering that at the elementary level, that is the official language of so many organizations, committees, United Nations, and that was important in the consideration. Mandarin Chinese, the outlook here was that it was so many speakers across the world, and that this is a direction that we need to consider. For Spanish, focusing on sort of the economic connection across the United States as a whole, and its valuable positioning with Mexico, and some of this sales information was important as we considered, well, why maybe Spanish? In terms of German, a lot of focus in on how it's so important in Michigan, that it has more people working for German-owned companies than any other state, and some of that local connection was important when there was consideration as to what language would be selected at the elementary level. As we move forward, we developed a community survey, and we worked on this for a while to make sure that we were getting the questions that were appropriate for such a survey. We sent it out, almost 1,100 community members responded, and we studied the survey. At the end of the day, difficult to see, but roughly 70% of the community supported Spanish as the choice that would be selected, Mandarin at 14%, and then followed by French and German. And so we looked at those surveys, survey results, studied those, and we brought them back to the committee. And then the committee itself discussed this for a while, and each member of the committee submitted their own feeling as to the direction we should go. So we had the community survey, but we also had the committee members themselves submitting what they thought was the correct direction or the direction they'd like to see. At the end of the day, this was fairly split, about half of the committee preferring that Spanish be the choice at the elementary level, and about 50/50 with Mandarin. So we worked through that, and then we discussed it at the administrative level as to the direction that we thought we should be moving. At the end of the day, we determined that based on the community survey and that split with the committee, we felt that Spanish was the direction that is to be done with the community. And so we are moving forward with Spanish in the elementary schools. And what we are in the process of doing right now is we have one of the Spanish teachers already locked into an elementary position, and we're looking to hire two more Spanish teachers so that they would fill out one Spanish teacher at each elementary school, one at Willow Meadows, one at Pleasant Ridge, and one at Harvest. Over the summer, we're gonna look, we're gonna work together with this committee, with these three Spanish teachers, and get some support from the language department, and also with our technology director, Heather Kelstrom, and look at articulating a plan to integrate technology and culture into the program, and our goal is to build proficiency in the program. Down the road, we are looking to potentially give a world language assessment as kids move through the program, kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, and then as they get into middle school, determine how are they doing with the level of proficiency to determine where they're at. And other school districts have done this and given an assessment to see where we're at, because we want to make sure that our program is going to work. We're looking to build proficiency, and we feel like that's an important step. So that covers our basic plan, and we just wanted to report back to everybody so they knew what our direction was and where we're going. And questions in the board?
Can you go back to the slide that has steps 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, just to see?
Sure, let me get back into... Okay, so...
Fairwood, back there.
Okay, it seems like you guys have done a great job of coming around to choosing the language.
I mean, there's certainly debate, I mean, there certainly was debate amongst the committee because obviously there is, you know, concern as to, well, what happens as you move through a process like this? We're trying to build and make sure that language is safe and strong. One of the things that is just coming out from the state of Michigan is this talk about not requiring world language requirement or credits anymore at high school level, and Mr. Grayden and I have had conversations about that. We feel that regardless of the decisions that are made at the state level, MDE level, we want to have a strong building of a language program, so we would support this regardless of it the state goes back and says, hey, those language requirements are not placing now.
I mean, I've had, since this decision was made, I've had two people come up to me and question, why are we focusing on language and not focusing on reading, writing, arithmetic, science, you know, those things? And my response to them has been that I think a language requirement, a second language requirement is vitally necessary, and that it changes how your brain works, it changes, you know, how you see the world so that you are more able to learn the other things.
Right. And a lot of research back on cognitive development showing that, you know, students that acquire the language skills, they do better in standardized tests and proficiency areas, so it actually helps enhance their reading and math, instead of not just reading, but in math as well.
So I am hoping that we're going to be very successful here, and that's why I'm, I am very, very interested in how we're going to evaluate as we go forward the results.
Right.
You know, and I'm not a big fan of the standardized tests and whatnot, so we need something, you know, if we're gonna have, you know, kids running around speaking Spanish, then that must, it must be work, kind of thing, so.
Okay, circle.
Any other questions from board members?
How often, daily, do they have?
No, it'll be twice a week, and it'll be approximately 40-minute blocks at a time, so a couple times, 40 minutes. And, you know, in its purest sense, the goal would have been, if we could have been able to do it 20 minutes three times a week, but in our current structure with our special schedule, we needed to get to as many times as we could per week in the structure, and that's what we're going to do.
Quick comment, can you flip over to the French slide?
Oh, yeah, sure.
For those people who have not had French, I want you to know that that lower right corner, that's Madame Maumond, you're becoming late to her class. No, seriousness, I have been an advocate of foreign language elementary for 10 years. Jane and I have had many conversations in this over the years, and I'm personally pleased that we've gotten to the point that we were able to do it. The foundation's stepping in, helping out. These are examples of why a district is good. You have community parents, you have community educators, you have community who support giving things. And I thank you for completing the process, I thank Jamie and Madame...
And I thank you for completing the process, and I thank Jamie, and Madame Hoof, and Barb, and the other people that spend time, which is a valuable thing to move forward. And I know that, as Todd said, just like music, foreign language in elementary years develops the capability of students, the data clear on that, and thank you for doing this, boys.
Thanks.
Is the emphasis on oral language?
Well, we've had discussions to that direction, and one of the teachers at the elementary level who's also a middle school teacher now, Eric Linsky, who will be helping with the program, has not recently been to Spanish department, because what we're trying to figure out is, what is that transition? And a lot of it should be about, you know, experiencing kids getting and talking and working with the culture, having conversations together in smaller groups, and trying to build proficiency in that way. But there also has to be a blend into, how are they gonna learn the vocabulary skills and the written skills and whatnot? So we're still articulating what we want that vision to be at the early levels, and then how it translates out when students get into middle school and high school.
Thank you. Trustee Zimmer, anything further on policy? I don't hear you a lot tonight, I hate it. Trustee, how do you think of the budget? I understand there's a meeting tomorrow.
There is a meeting tomorrow, that's our update.
Okay, very good. Chair will entertain a motion to authorize items A through D as part of the consent agenda. Need a motion? Zoomer, Jake? Seconded by Karen. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item scheduled on the next agenda, we'll have the budget hearing at 6:00 PM, prior to the start of the meeting, the budget hearing. And then, we will adopt the budget at the regularly scheduled meeting, and then Superintendent Gray will give us a strategic framework update.
I'll tell you a little bit on the framework, the steps we've taken so far, and kind of our implementation plans, and take a little bit more about how we're going to be talking about our five goals, how they're gonna fit moving forward, we've got some information for on that?
This is the point in the meeting where members of the audience can address the board for up to three minutes. Are there any members of the audience who would like to address the board at this time? Okay, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on Tuesday, June 25th, 2013, at 6:30 here at Liberty. We will have the budget meeting that will begin at 6:00 PM. And with that, the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment. Zoomer, Todd, support, and Paul. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
This has been an SCTN production.